So we will, council members, we are closing the discussion now. Thank you. And we are moving into the discussion of loud music noise in the central business district. So I'll open this up for council member discussion.
We're not going to finish that discussion item?
The what?
Are we going to talk about that discussion item first or are we going to?
Yes, that's the first item. We moved this up in the discussion.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're finishing that because there's people here that are waiting for a response from us.
Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about. This is our normal procedure is after public comment, we move into our discussion items and this is the first item on the agenda, so.
Okay, we were crossing our waves there.
Oh, okay, okay. Gary, since you have your hand up.
I'll open it up. Art, music, it's part of the fabric of Punta Gorda. It's the lifestyle that many of us hear. As it was pointed out, you can go to a restaurant and see people from 25 to 85. Actually, I have one friend that's 102 and she still will dance a horror with me on a Friday night sometimes. And I'm not sure why this was brought up this way, but it has been. I am opposed at this juncture of changing things. We've got a city master plan that's coming down the pike that hopefully is also going to help us even more finely tune and develop the downtown area as well as the rest of Punta Gorda. I think that things should be at the status quo. I just would like to point out Mayor Prafki and I were both participants in the Taste of Punta Gorda by the Rotary Club, their major fundraiser. Nancy was one of the judges. I was the almost master of ceremonies because I had never done it before. And I witnessed Mike Riley and his boogeyman as he came off the stage. And he had a number of ladies that were my age and older, including one in a wheelchair, rocking like they were 17. And that's part of what I'm saying is the fabric and the quality of life of retiring in Punta Gorda. It may be exhausting, but it's an awful lot of fun. And I think that we need to do everything we can to preserve that genre.
Jaha? My family's lived in the historic district for over 100 years and music's always been a part. And at the times when music was not at the forefront of our city, it's actually been our most stagnant period. There was a time where, before this last period where people would come from all central Florida to come to Punta Gorda. I think it's very important that also we understand that we have a seasonal economy in which our restaurants, which we like open year round, actually pretty much bleed during the summer. And it's only being able to go having after 10 second wave of visitors, which are from Northport, that actually our people are able to stay open. I think that if we desire to have our city as we wish to have it and not pretty much have our tax rate tripled in order to actually maintain our viability, I think we should leave things as they are. I think it's fine. I think that we are respectful people. I think that when there are issues, very simply can call the restaurant and make deal. But I do think that we have to have empathy with those people who provide us with our lifestyle.
Lynn? I agree. I have listened to numerous citizens over the past week or so regarding this issue. And I would not support shutting music down, number one, ever, never. I think that is a huge part of what this community is and what it represents to other communities. And we are a community that people aspire to live in. And I think that it's extremely important and critical, as Jaha mentioned, to the success of the restaurants downtown, to be able to have music at their locations. I would not support having to change the ordinance at this point in time. Several years ago, we had a group of the downtown business owners get together and kind of come to an agreement that they would self-police. We have a lot of new players in town since that time. And I would make a suggestion that rather than amending the ordinance at this time, that we get that group back together and we come up with an updated agreement that can be monitored and policed. And if it still becomes a problem or stays a problem, then we can readdress it six months or a year from now. But at this point in time, I just don't see the need to amend an ordinance.
Debbie?
I have two things. One is I have a friend who lives in Sarasota, who when she saw this on the agenda, she told me a little anecdote. And I'd like to share that with you based on what Dover Cole has been telling us we need to do with our downtown. Sarasota used to have a very vibrant, thriving music community in their downtown section. And they started building high-rise condos and filling those with residences. And everybody wanted to live downtown because it was vibrant, but they didn't like the noise. And if you go to Sarasota now, they're not known for their music in their downtown section. And we were told by Dover Cole that we need to integrate residences and businesses in our downtown section. And I think we have to make sure that our residents understand that if you live in a thriving business community, you're going to have the sounds of a thriving business community. And I did tell John that I was interested in having a discussion about this. I never dreamed it would make it to city council. I was hoping that I could work something through with the Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, John Wright's been out of town forever and I couldn't do it. But I do think that part of the problem is that when the owners are contacted, there's a feeling that they're not responding. And maybe having it called to your attention that it is an issue, maybe this will fix it. I'm not in favor of changing anything at this time. I love our downtown.
I would agree that I would hate to see us do anything. I think the vibrancy of Punta Gorda is what we have worked hard for. What we have done with this community since Hurricane Charlie is amazing. And it's been a collaborative effort on and part of our entire community. It's, you know, on Friday night, there's an event called Unity Around the Lake. And I've been asked to be the keynote speaker. And one of the things that I really think that this community has demonstrated unity is in building this community and making it what it is today. Now, there might be some situations that pop up. And I think that having a group of business owners and the chamber get together like you suggest and revisit it and see what we can do. I'm totally in favor of that. I think that if we do that, we can come up with some ways to control it. I'm not in favor of stopping the music. I have a neighbor from Rio de Janeiro who would really prefer to go out at midnight and dance till four o'clock in the morning. So, you know, but I also understand perhaps at certain times, it's kind of just notching it down a little bit makes sense. So I think, and I think the point of on school nights or whatever it might be, but I think the resident, the business owners can come up with a good solution. Rather than us providing decibel meters to the police department, I mean, that's just not.
That's crazy.
That's not what we are. It's not what we want to be here. And so I would agree that a direction going forward, if we can convene this, reconvene this committee with the chamber and the downtown merchants and the business owners, just to kind of discuss it and come back and let us know what they.
Yeah, we had that meeting at, it was called Jack's at the time. Bill Minarick was the owner. Some, I see some faces that were there at the meeting. Some are new. And at that time, we decided to put in some ground rules. Yes, we would police ourselves. And maybe we need to have a refresher course, see if we can tweak some more things. And so as city manager, we will set that up.
Could I suggest that concerned citizens might also be allowed to, at least in writing, participate? I know that they don't want to meet with them because they think that they're going to get.
Well, now we got to figure out a venue.
Oh, okay, never mind.
We will have a group discussion again, like we did before. It was very nice. We had a lot of the places that had music in the room. And we had representatives from, well, city manager's office, police, and all the businesses that had music were there. I think all of them were there. So we'll reconvene and we'll see what we come up with.
Okay, I like it.
Awesome.
Okay, I think we've. We're done and ready to move on. And thank you all for being here. You're welcome to stay for this because it's going to be a.
Is it something we said?
I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 11:00.
I guess we offended everybody.
I guess so. Please, don't say that word.
We will get the council back in session. Howard, if you can come in and join us, we would appreciate it.
All those in favor of finding Howard, say aye.
Okay, and Howard is now here. So we will begin with the budget item. And thank you for the rest of you staying for this energetic meeting. And now that you have a place to sit, because I noticed some of you were standing outside for a long time. We'll start with the appropriation of the FY 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership BVP funds.
This is just an appropriation of grant funds? And so we just need your approval to appropriate the funds as stated in the agenda item.
No approval.
Second.
There's been a motion in two seconds to approve the appropriation of the funds. Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to the Veterans Park Phase Two improvements.
Before I turn it over to Mitchell Austin, Urban Design Senior Planner, this topic has come up in the past. And we have put together some planning numbers on how to complete the rest of Veterans Park. Staff's recommendation is that if you want to pursue this, that for economies of scale, that we do the whole thing all at once. We hire one contractor, assuming we get some bids in that are favorable. And we prioritize the sections so that the most important sections get done before the end of March of 2020. That is going to be staff's recommendation. We have a way to fund it if you want to pursue that, so.
Again, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Back in October of 2018, city council directed staff to look at the Veterans Park improvements. City council had looked at, previously seen the conceptual plans for the Phase Two area at Veterans Park. And had looked upon those favorably, directing staff to produce full engineering designs, which have been accomplished by Public Works Engineering staff. And provided a cost estimate back in October of $540,000 for those improvements. City council directed staff to look at the possibility of funding, of creating logical segments or portions of that plan to construct. City staff looked at those, at the total park improvements for Phase Two and said, okay, well, those areas need to be at logical construction breakpoints. They need to be sequential phases so we're not constructing something in, you know, and having to cross over an area that had previously been constructed. And those construction sub-phases needed to align with the major design elements that were in the park. So that you had a complete section when you were done with those sub-phases. There have been private contributions to the Phase Two areas of improvements. Previous are in the interstitial period from our first discussions on the Phase Two until today. Those private contributions have been well in excess of $70,000 and there is a commitment for future work. And those improvements are to the Donor Plaza area and to the parking along Reta Esplanade. So looking in more detail at the sub-phase areas, Phase A is the completion of the Donors Plaza area and walkway, approximately $80,000 in total cost. Phase B is a further completion of that walkway at approximately $75,000. Phase C is a substantial area and this includes the proposed mural wall and the Purple Heart Memorial area. And this is $100,000. Phase D is a further completion of a plaza area along the mural wall and some improvements within the Nesbit Street area to provide a little bit of additional parking, but mainly to improve the pedestrian connectivity from existing public parking to the park area. That's $45,000. And then the big component is Subphase Area C, which is approximately $240,000. And this is for the main ceremonial plaza area adjacent to the gazebo. So in total, those, all of those sub-phases equal back up to our $540,000 initial planning cost for the project. We do have a firm commitment from the private group for $70,000 in funds, which means that the total for the city would be $470,000. As Howard noted, city staff does recommend that we construct this as a single project. Economies of scale, minimizing the amount of construction disruption into the park are benefits of approaching it in that fashion.
So when we recommend things, we, it is a part of our responsibility to give you a funding source. And previous council meeting, we discussed the possibility of transferring money from the Lashley Park Marriage Point Sales Tax Project to the Lashley Park Veterans Park Project. We had $500,000 setting aside for Marriage Point as a planning number in the sales tax program. We could transfer those dollars because it's the same park. Yes, it's not specifically the same name on that project, but it's within the same park. Sales tax projects are infrastructure-related. This is infrastructure. We could do that. And as we put our bid specs together, we would prioritize those A through E sections as to which section we would want to get done first. Because we want to make sure that we don't have the whole park under construction come May 28th, 2020.
March 28th.
March, what did I say?
May.
Oh, that's a couple of weeks away. March of 2020. You don't want to have the whole park under construction. That makes no sense. But if we can finish the most important sections first, in case we can't get the whole thing done, at least we'll have that represented. And so Public Works Engineering has a lot of the design accomplished. We still need to, I know our process now. We need to get it in a bid format. We need to go through the bidding process, get the construction firm on board. Assuming the bids come back favorably, it's going to take some time. That's why we will want to prioritize the sections. So our recommendation is if you want to do it, let's just get it done all at once.
Council members? I already said, made a comment at the previous council meeting, so I'll defer.
I just want to ask, just to be clear, this would be a deferral of the initial project we're talking about, about the Wedding Point. Is that correct?
Well, it would have to.
Doesn't mean we couldn't do it again, do that part of the future.
We could if it's on the next sales tax project.
Okay, so we could reinstitute that at a future date.
Of course, of course.
Okay. I'm fine.
Other comments? Lynn?
How sure are we on these costs for the different parts of this project? Because it seems to me that it's a lot of money. I don't necessarily have a problem approving it, however, it just seems like it's an awful lot of money. And since we didn't receive specifics on what each segment of the project was going to include, it's a little hard to put my head around it.
So the costs that were presented today include contingency. Public Works Engineering has done a detailed construction cost estimate. However, that is based on their numbers that they're receiving in the recent past. So without knowing whether or not city council wanted to proceed with this project now or in 2020 or 2021, we wanted to leave that contingency in there so that we didn't have to come back again and say, oh, yeah, well, that was based on 2019 numbers. This does include a contingency.
Nancy? I think as hard as we fought to get the signage to bring people to the wall, I think we owe it to the people who get off the interstate and come to the wall to have a park worthy of their time and our veterans. I'm, I see no problem.
The reason why I made the comment that I did in the previous council meeting when we discussed the local option sales tax dollars is that, you know, the planning for this started in 2013. And those people who were on our local option sales tax, they were evaluating these projects based on the information they had at that point in time. The Vietnam Wall wasn't even built then. So we have a whole new situation now. And that is a prominent part of our community as opposed to Marriage Point that's tucked back in the corner. Not that, you know, we don't need to make some improvements there. I question $500,000. But I think that this is a much more effective use of our local option sales tax dollars. And I would say whatever we can do post haste and to prioritize this and put resources behind this to get it done. Because we have important stuff coming up next year, so. I would agree with that. My only concern when I met with Howard the other day is we have ongoing renovations at Gilchrist Park. We're talking about doing Ponds Park next year and now we're doing this. And I don't want to see all three parks torn up at the same time. So I would like to see this done as soon as we can get it done. And I have no problem moving forward with it because the longer we wait, the more the costs are going to increase.
I would just like to add to what Mayor Prafki was saying because she makes a very good point. Punta Gorda is more than just a place for arts and music. We're a much more, a much more in-depth, multi-layered one. I think it's very important that we also, and within the signage, that we, this is one of our great assets as a community to draw people to come see her and know us.
Okay, so do I have a motion? We have a motion in two seconds to approve moving forward and using the funds from the, as recommended. Is that enough as a motion, Howard? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Awesome.
We'll get started and see how soon we can get this done. I mean, it's going to be tight.
I know that there's, we have procedures and processes. Is there any way to kind of like expedite things?
Bob Nicula? How? Be flexible on this, be flexible on this.
I think it's both being flexible but realistic. Certainly once it's out to bid and we review bids and have acceptable bids, I don't foresee any reason why the entire improvements couldn't be completed by that March 28th date. You know, thinking back, I started here at the end of June in 2016. And at that point in time, the only thing that was really there at the wall was the concrete wall itself. Granite panels weren't hung. And that came together in two months, the rest of the project, so.
I guess.
We can get that done.
Yeah, if we can build 11 miles of seawall in 11, in 18 months.
There's a lot of examples in the community where things have pulled together. And I think having one contractor on site, or, you know, a contractor with subcontractors, I think it's very realistic. To have that done. I mean, looking at where we're at now, that's nine months away.
Thank you for giving it the best effort. We appreciate it.
I'm going to couch what he says, we're going to try.
Excellent. All right, thank you, great. Moving to the next item, then the FY 2020 Budget Status Update for Sanitation, Building, Marina, and Gas Tax Funds.
Good morning. Kristin Simeon from Finance. We're going to go over these several funds. We've been breaking it up so that it's not everything at once, so we'll continue with that practice. We're going to start with our sanitation fund. And again, some of the decisions made at our last council meeting for the general fund are carried through to the sanitation fund. So our assumptions of a 4% merit increase, 12% health insurance, 5% on the general liability insurance, and 3% overall and generally other operations have been put into this pro forma. So for proposed fiscal year 20, you can see our revenues will be approximately $3,787,570 with total expenditures of $4,370. And that includes three packers. So we'll go into a little bit more detail on the next slide, but I wanted to show you that. And we're continuing to build our operating reserve and our capital reserve for other purchases of packers. One additional thing that is being proposed for the sanitation fund is a recycling fee increase. So our current contract goes up 58 cents per, for each year in the contract. So we have to, and that's on a per-month basis for a residential unit. So for the fiscal year 2020, we're only proposing a 42 cent increase. And that's because two years ago, the contract had increased 30 cents for having to travel further distances as part of the contract. So they've got a closer location, so we were able to reduce that particular, this fiscal year, increase to only 42 cents instead of the 58 cents. So the proposed fee is $22.62 per month. Fiscal year 20 is balanced with the recommended increase of the 42 cents for the recycling. Recycling does have that budgeted increase based on the contract. Fuel is budgeted to increase for anticipated diesel prices and additional landfill trips. Some of this is offset, though, by decrease in landfill fees. And fiscal year 20 is adding to the, it's not an add to the fleet, I'm sorry, it's a replacement of three packers. Going out into fiscal year 2022, they also have additional equipment needs and that is built into the five-year pro forma. So again, looking ahead, adding the recycling rate increases in through fiscal year 2023, the fund is able to self-sustain itself. In fiscal year 24, we would look at it again for the refuse and yard waste side. Because right now, in that year, we are not able to continue to build our capital reserve for additional packer replacements. Any questions on the sanitation fund?
Howard? Just have one interesting comment based on today's paper. You know, when we, and we'll provide you this again when we put our budget message out, we do a survey of sanitation rates in the area. And you always see that, you know, Punta Gorda is on the, is towards the higher side because we still do twice-a-week collection. We do it in-house. But if you saw the paper today, and if you didn't see the paper today, Charlotte County has renegotiated its contract for once-a-week collection. And in 2021, their monthly rate is going to be getting very close to ours. For once a week and they outsource it. Their 2020 rate, we don't know yet because they're still negotiating it. So that's quite a change because Charlotte County was significantly less. And now that has totally changed. So it looks like we're doing extremely well for twice a week. That's the only comment.
No, it's, we are providing, in my opinion, a very cost-effective service and a very personalized service to our community and keeping our community really looking top-notch. And our residents appreciate it from the feedback I've received.
I think that Nancy and I can attest that once Howard brought the idea of maybe farming it out and going to once a week and it just did not fly with our citizenry.
Oh, I don't even bring it up anymore.
Oh, I don't even bring it up anymore.
I know.
When our house is burned down. I remember when Howard did that a number of years ago.
Oh, yeah.
It was like, we heard from the residents.
Not going to happen.
I don't bring it up anymore.
Okay.
So as part of our sanitation fund, we would ask for your recommendation or your approval to move forward with implementing that increase because again, it would require an ordinance change that we'd come back to.
Okay.
So move that we move forward with the increase.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second to approve sanitation increase. Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're moving forward with it.
Moving forward with the increase.
We haven't agreed yet.
Our building fund is doing very well. Our total revenues proposed for fiscal year 20 is just over $1 million, and the expenditures are about 1.1 million. It's got a healthy reserve, but again, when I go onto the next slide, we continually to monitor that. And of course, if there's ever an economic downturn, that is what will sustain us in the future. Instead of having to do, we've had layoffs in the past. We had, the building department had to do furloughs, things like that. So having a reserve in the building fund of a little bit more than we would normally see is prudent for us. Fiscal year 20 is balanced with no change in fees. They do have a replacement vehicle. It was previously scheduled to be replaced, but because of the addition of staff, it hadn't been. But now at this time, they are requesting that. They, again, will continue to monitor and adjust staffing as activity warrants. And operating reserves are maintained for future stabilization. Any questions on the building fund?
No. Questions?
Our marina fund, again, is also balanced and is doing well. Total revenues are expected to be at approximately $465,000, with total expenditures about $445,000 in fiscal year 20. The reserves are, again, being maintained with some use in the future years. No change in fees are currently being proposed. It does include the estimated grants for operations of the pump-out boat. We do apply for those each year, so those are, we expect to continue to get those. Continuation of repair and maintenance to the mooring field and docks is $25,000 per year. Dredging needs of $25,000 are also included. And any of those unused funds are carried over to future years in case there's larger projects that are needed. There is replacement of a washer and dryer in the boater's laundry facilities, and other needs sometimes come up, so we budget $6,000 total for capital projects. Any questions on the marina?
Lynn?
Just a general question. These reserve amounts, are there specific, I mean, I understand the downturn in the economy and all that, but are there specific things we must keep reserve money in, in place for? And is there a guideline as to the percentage of money that we need to keep in each of those funds? Because it seems like, I mean, like in particular, the, the second one, it has, the building department has a huge reserve.
So the guideline is 16.7%. However, with our building fund, trying to maintain that during the economic downturn was very difficult. So we brought our reserves down very, very low during the economic downturn. And that was trying to sustain it over several years. So again, the building fund is a little bit higher, and there are cases where you would want something higher, and that would be one of them.
Okay.
But generally, it's 16.7% is the national guideline of operations.
Thank you.
Something like the building fund, they're supported by fees.
Right.
There are no tax dollars, property tax dollars, or other general fund dollars that go into building fund. So rather than lower the fees now, decrease their reserves, and then you have an economic downturn, you got to do inspections. I mean, so it kind of keeps them steady. And at least we can get the work done that we have to. Yeah, that's a significant reserve they have.
This is a question that I got asked, so.
We get questioned on that quite a bit.
Yep. Well, and, you know, I look at the reserve we have in the marina fund. While it might look percentage-wise like a lot, all it takes is one big project that we need to do, and it could really have a significant impact on that reserve, so.
Yep. I was just taking.
Yeah. And like, the, the thing with the marina that I will bring up as well is if we have damage to the docks due to a storm, and we don't have that revenue coming in, that's another reason why you might want to have a higher reserve in that particular fund as well, so. I'm going on to the additional 5-cent gas tax funds. Again, total revenues are approximately $725,000, and we budgeted our expenditures at $725,000 with just a small reserve. Again, that just in case there's a little fluctuation in the gas taxes that are coming in, we are, we're able to do that. But this fund, we truly try to spend on the paving program. For fiscal year 2020, the gas tax funds are approximately $266,000. And this is slightly lower than what we projected last year for 2020. The revenues have come down just a slight bit in fiscal year 19. We're working with the state just to double-check their calculations. But we don't like to over-budget, so we prefer to be more conservative. And if they can find that there was an error on their part, we will get some additional funds.
How are we allocated these funds?
There's, it's based on actual purchases of gallons of gas, and it goes to Charlotte County. But they, and when I say Charlotte County, they use Charlotte County as a whole. And we have an inter-local agreement where we get a percentage.
So it's not based on gas purchases within our jurisdiction?
Correct. And then, as we've been doing for quite a few years now, the general fund does subsidize this fund for $459,000. And again, we just have a little pictorial of how much is coming from the general fund and how much is actually coming from the gas tax for our paving program. An attached to the agenda item was the five-year program. And again, it's just, it is subject to change based on the needs, but they put together what's next in the next year's plan. Any questions on that?
Questions?
We go on to our 6-cent gas tax, and our total revenues are approximately $880,000 proposed for fiscal year 20, with total expenditures of $985,000. And again, you can see that we're using reserves over the five years. So by fiscal year 2024, we're pretty low in that fund. There is an increase in the sidewalk replacements due to tree roots. That was an increase of $30,000. Increase in traffic and signal and light repairs based on our FDOT contract of $21,000. Capital Outlay is there, looking at a traffic monitoring system to install, $25,000. Again, that one will be reviewed. It's, it's not definite, but they are looking at something like that.
They, meaning?
Public works and IT. And fiscal year 20 to 24 is balanced with the use of reserves.
So go back to the previous chart. See, in this instance, a lot of our road maintenance is handled out of this gas tax fund. And you could see that based on the revenues and expenses we're projecting, that there's not going to be much of a reserve in five years. So we monitor that closely. But here's a case, like in the previous gas tax funds, where we spend it all, as you could see, the revenues and expenses, to maintain the roads and the right-of-ways and the bridge maintenance and whatever we need to do to keep our road network up to snuff. And hopefully, we can reverse that projection over the years. But the reason we do these forecasts is to let you know well in advance that we may have a problem coming up.
Any questions on any of these funds?
Questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving into unfinished business. 1% local option sales tax committee.
Good morning. Melissa Reiger, Communications Manager. Today, we have three decisions to make, or else decide a process for deciding those three decisions. We found out that we have been invited to have a representative on the Charlotte County Sales Tax Committee. So the city council will need to appoint a person to serve in that capacity. We just found that out this morning, so you may just want to talk about the process that you're going to use for that.
At a previous council meeting, Councilmember Matthews, or Vice Mayor Matthews, I'm sorry, volunteered to serve. And I think that was the agreement amongst all of us that.
Okay, great. Then I will make sure that they have your name and that they're in direct contact with you then, Vice Mayor Matthews. Okay. Each of you need to select someone from your district to serve on our City of Punta Gorda Sales Tax Committee. How would you like to go about doing that?
I, I would, I'm prepared to just appoint someone as well.
I would like to actually have people submit their names if they're interested to someone.
To each of the council members?
To each of the, to each of the council members. They could submit to me so that I could, you know.
Just a name or a formal application process?
I already have my names. People have already contacted me.
I have too.
I mean, the people have already contacted you. I've, you know, I haven't had anyone contact me personally. I have thoughts, but I think it would be, I would really appreciate it if people would let me know that they're interested. So.
Okay. Well, we could, we can put that in the weekly?
And do we have a date at which we would want then?
Yes.
To make sure people let us know by so that we?
If they could let you know by the June 5th meeting? So that would give them the two weeks. Do you think that's?
Do we have to know by, we have to point on the June 5th meeting?
Or we could appoint on the June 19th meeting as well, just so we have it before the beginning of July.
You could have them notify us by the end of May so that we could maybe, what do you think?
I have somebody, so.
Me too.
I'm ready. I'm with Nancy. I've been looking for someone to step forward, so I'd like to put it out there and see if somebody would step forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can.
I mean, I can find somebody just by asking, but.
And I know that, you know, I've had, I have somebody in the district who has already expressed an interest. I just need to, you know, see who else may be interested and with no, you know.
Can you just do that through your newsletter or something and then get it?
Well, I can. I, you know, not everybody in the district gets my newsletter, even though it's, you know, goes to 2,000 people directly.
Our newsletter's going to the, to the general. Mine isn't just to my district either.
And homeowners' associations as well. I, I can do that.
We'll put it, we'll put it out in the weekly. We'll also put it out on Facebook. We can tweet it out that, with the two districts to let the one, one, each of you know that you're still looking for someone for your districts and that they can submit names in that manner.
So let me ask you this. Are we just, when we put the stuff out there, are we just asking for people who are interested in districts five and three to submit names?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
By the end of May?
Um, sure.
Okay.
Okay, just those two districts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We'll do that. And then was there a member from this committee that wanted to serve on the City of Punta Gorda Sales Tax Committee?
I would like to.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Then I think it looks like everyone's in agreement that.
Sure.
We have Councilmember Carrie.
Tag, you're it.
Yeah.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
That was easy enough. And our 10 groups that we had identified at the last meeting, all of them submitted their representatives in a very timely fashion. So as usual, our citizens are engaged and ready to participate in the process, so.
Okay, good. Awesome. Thanks. All right. The next item on our agenda is City of Punta Gorda Historic District Initiative Engineering Infrastructure Analysis.
Good morning.
Good stuff.
David Helsa with Urban Design for the record. Today, we have representatives from the Infrastructure Solution Services here to give you a presentation on the final findings of the Historic District Infrastructure Initiative. Following the presentation, staff is going to ask that you give us some direction on priorities.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mark Mueller. I'm with a project manager, or senior project manager with ISS. And with me, I have Wade Cobb from our office. We are very fortunate to be here this morning to present this summary report to you. We are on one of your continuing services consultants as well as have, was selected independently to be able to prepare this analysis for you. So there's a lot of information here. I know you've had a long morning, so we're going to go ahead and go through this as briefly as we can, but cover the information as well. So this study, the, that we did, the report itself was a pretty lengthy report. This is just a summary report of that study. And it, it covers all the items that you see here before you, and I'll briefly touch on each one of these as part of this discussion. The city had a vision along with their strategic plan to be able to review some of the infrastructure within portions of the city. Specifically, the limits of this study were the area that you see in green on this map. And it, it's basically bound by Hargraves Avenue to the north, the railroad to the south, DuPont to the west, and Cooper Street to the east. It's a, it's a unique blend of neighborhood commercial, a lot residential, both multifamily and single-family, as well as a lot of community-type facilities like the community centers and the houses of worship as well. The purpose of the study was to review the infrastructure, most specifically focusing on sidewalks, drainage, and lighting within this study limits. To look at the analysis of the infrastructure, provide some recommended solutions, give you a magnitude of cost for that so that you can use it as a tool as you look forward to improvements and guiding your CIP, helping to focus on how you distribute requests for final design on some of the infrastructure improvements. So with those main disciplines, we looked at sidewalks, and even more specifically, looked at a lot of your accessible ramps as well. There are over, nearly five miles of existing sidewalk within the limits of the study area, and a little over four miles of gaps in those sidewalks that we also looked at. Basically, we reviewed the integrity of the facilities, compliance with standards. When it came to looking at the ramps, we were viewing, again, the integrity of those, compliance with ADA, looking at cross slopes and longitudinal slopes and a lot of those conditions as we looked at the facilities. Another discipline was drainage, and we primarily looked at the, the existing systems that were there, looked at their apparent effectiveness, where there were deficiencies with those systems, and how those interrelated with the potential to expand some of the infrastructure within the area, as in if a sidewalk was added, there'd be some improvements necessary to some of the drainage. And then provide some recommended solutions. And when it came to the lighting, we were looking at the, kind of gathering information on the types of lighting that were used within the study limits, as well as its effectiveness and any recommended solutions and how to expand that lighting network. The, the study started with gathering information. A lot of that was just gathering record information, a lot of historical information. A lot of that's noted at the top. I won't go into that in depth. But then we also started a field investigation component of it. We've walked this network numerous times, all the sidewalks and streets. It, we've covered it probably three or four times throughout the study. We started the investigation with actually flying the entire limits by drone to compile an aerial for the area. With this just being on a concept level, you know, it's not cost-effective to go in and do a lot of upfront survey. That'd be done as you isolate when you look at for final design. We collected at every single accessible ramp, we collected the cross slopes, a lot of information on whether they were compliant or not, as well as notating the GIS, collected GIS, well, the physical location of those, so that your GIS database can be updated with this. And then you have a dynamic tool to be used as you move forward in the future. And then everything that we collected, photos were taken of those as well. And those were interrelated with geo-reference. So again, as you go through the GIS, you have that data available for you. This is just the overall limits, again, of the project. This is the actual aerial that was collected. This is just the overall limits, again, of the project, this is the actual aerial that was collected for the study limits. This gives you an idea, this is just tying in the drone imagery, give you an idea of what kind of a tool this is, without even having your survey data. This is just one of the intersections at MLK, and you can see in the blow-up here, you can not only see the real clarity of what the existing conditions are, but you can see right there, a lot of the residue in the curb baseline, so you know you have a flooding issue at this quadrant. And you can even see some shadowing where this accessible ramp has a drop-off adjacent to the street, and so there's actually a curb lip there that needs to be corrected. So just even visually, without us being out there in the field, there's, it's a very useful tool. So as we get into the investigation, we were compiling a lot of the information, this will be one of those, a little bit briefer, but as we collected each one of these pieces for each of the disciplines for sidewalk, drainage, and lighting, all of that information was collected via GIS. So you had this mapping that was provided back to you, to be able to give you a comprehensive look at what your existing facilities are. That database has been provided to the city, so now you have that as a dynamic tool to work with. And that was done for each of these separate disciplines. And so then, that mapping, along with a lot of historical background, this, again, this touches on the GIS component, this is part of the mapping of one of the intersections. You're able to query those items, be able to see kind of a summary of what our observations were, along with a photograph for the specific item that you're selecting. We also brought in the neighborhood component of it, because ideally, nobody knows the area better than those that live there themselves. And so as part of the analysis, we did conduct a community meeting that was held this past December, and it was attended by ISS staff as well as city staff. We were, it was well-attended by over fifty-plus residents as well, and it was great to have Councilman Cummings there as well. And that was a, a really functional piece of this, to be able to hear some of that firsthand. We set the meeting up, basically, as a two-part component. We did a questionnaire that was very specific to each of those disciplines. That's just an example of one of the questionnaires that was received. And then we broke that large overall map into four separate quadrants, and had large, like, three-foot-by-four-foot boards available. And we had each of the residents, as they were looking at this, provide information on, you know, we have a drainage issue, we have a sidewalk issue, we'd like to see better lighting here. They're actually putting stickers on a map of exactly where their concerns are, and as we're dialoguing over the evening, we comprised that information. This is an example of just one of those boards, and, and just a kind of a blow-up of one of the areas. This is up over Hargraves, and just showing where, you know, we've got a handicap ramp, we've got a problem, we've got some drainage along the front edge of our parcel. And so, along with all of the data that we had collected to date, this is just one of those additional components to use in the analysis. We then established an evaluation matrix to look at this and how to, how to help prioritize what your needs would be for the area. And basically, it looks at a lot of weighted criteria, this is in the report, it just gives an example here, but there were, I think, ten or eleven items that we had, various items to be reviewed in the matrix, and each one had a weighting factor that we worked out with city staff on how to, to look at that. And then that would take each one of the street segments, every street corner from street to street, we broke each one of them down into a separate item, so there was like fifty-one components to this overall study for the network. And each one received a ranking of highest priority to lowest priority. We use that as one of the key items in the analysis to help guide what we felt some of those areas of concern would be, and this then looks at, this is just some information on how we summarize some of the information on each one of those, the components of the analysis, the sidewalk network, the utility network. And in doing so, we provide you a concept map back that takes that GIS base and provides you a summary of where the observed deficiencies in. This slide shows you both sidewalk and ramps, where there's deficient ramps that need to be replaced, or where there's sidewalks that have deficiencies in either significant gaps that ought to be connected, or there's public safety issues, and we provided that in the concept planning. Then the same was done through the drainage network. This entire area falls within a FEMA AE flood zone. The entire area ranges from about elevation eight down to about elevation three, and the majority of it's around elevation five or six, with real shallow surface flow. So there are definitely some, some delays in getting the drainage off of this area. And so one of the things that we pointed out in the study is it's an area that's beginning to redevelop, and there's a lot of vacant lots that are out. And as a new single-family home comes in, that doesn't trigger floodplain mitigation, where maybe a corporate structure would. And so as these new homes are coming in, and they're getting built up, you know, three, four feet to meet the regulations, they're not required to mitigate, nor, nor should they, because that would be a hardship on that, but that does impact your available floodplain each, each time something's reduced. So one of the things that we suggest being looked at overall is maybe some type of a regional stormwater facility within the study area or adjacent to a couple of areas outside of this, where I think it would be beneficial to look long-term in how, as this growth continues, how you're trying to offset what those impacts may be. And then we looked at the lighting network as well, looking at what some of the concerns were out there.